We want to bring this meeting to order if you would please. Welcome, everyone. Welcome planning commissioners to the planning commission meeting for April 25th. Uh, let's see, Mr. Garner, if you would, call the roll.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Quinlan?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Beldon?
Here.
If everybody would make sure you turn on your mics tonight. I know we had some issues with that, me included, last time. And if you would also silence your phones, everyone, please. Okay, um, first up is consent. Uh, number one is approval of amendments from April 11th meeting. Uh, second is administrative item sixteen dash five four zero three for eighteen ninety-eight East Mission Boulevard, Whistler Woods. Submitted by Phil Crabtree. Um, is there anybody that wants to pull anything off the consent agenda or are there any motions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Selby?
I'd like to know that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Selby and a second from Commissioner Audrey. Any other comments? Mr. Garner, if you would, call the roll.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Quinlan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Beldon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Let's see, old business first up, rezoning sixteen dash five three six six for the northeast corner of Greg Avenue in Van Ash. Uh, this is CNN Business Park submitted by McClellan Engineers. Um, Mr. Thompson has this, but I think we're also looking to table this item, if that's correct.
Um, Mr. Chair, the applicant has requested the item to be tabled for the next two weeks.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, in that case, I'll entertain a motion to table the item for two weeks.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
A second, okay. A motion from Ms. Beldon and a second from Ms. Selby. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Garner, would you call the roll?
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Quinlan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Beldon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item on old business is administrative item sixteen dash five three nine three. Uh, this is for UDC Chapter one five one point zero one amendments submitted by Alderman Petty and the city attorney. Mr. Petty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, when we presented this last time, there seemed to be somewhat of a consensus among the commissioners that we broaden this proposal beyond merely allowing eaves encroaching into setbacks, but architectural projections in general such as eaves, utility chases, chimneys, bay windows. Uh, drafted that language with us, the attorney, I believe it's in your packet for your approval or amendment, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Good, thank you. Mr. Williams, do you want to add any comment? No?
Uh, no, this is actually, uh, came primarily from Alderman Petty. I drafted it up for him.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, let's see, I guess is there any comment from the public on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Any comments, questions, motions from the planning commission? Mr. Hoskins?
Um, the added language says, "Rip over hampster, utilities, chases, bay windows should be allowed to intrude slightly into setback area, but never across property line." Words slightly seems to be really, really open for interpretation.
Uh, where are you reading? I have different language here.
He's just, he's reading the whereas clause. You need to read down to the actual code, which is under Section One, which states, "An architectural projection such as eve, utility chase, chimney, or bay window shall not be considered to be in violation of a setback requirement as long as rejection does not intrude into a public right of way or extend more than three feet into a setback. Rejection which encroaches into a setback shall not come closer than three feet to a property line."
Works for me, thanks.
Okay.
I missed you.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Beldon?
Um, there's an item tonight that talks about part of an ordinance that, that, um, says that eaves can't be more than, they can't be less than ten feet apart. I would assume that anywhere such, stated such as that, that takes precedence over this.
I have staff, or Mr. Petty, you might comment on that if you want, but...
Uh, I, I think the ordinance you're referring to is the cottage housing development, uh, section of the code, and yes, that does take precedence over this.
Thank you. More questions or comments?
Kyle? May I think?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes. Thank you. Um, perhaps what, also what Ms. Beldon is referring to could be not planning code, but building code, uh, in which, uh, any, anything that would be flammable would have to be five feet apart, so typically, or ten feet apart. So typically buildings, eaves, any construction or structure that could catch fire would have to be that far apart, so that will affect these structures as well.
Okay.
Clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions, comments, motions?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Hoffman? I make a motion that we approve ADM sixteen dash five three nine three. Uh, is this a recommendation?
It's actually a forward.
Yeah. Make a motion that we forward ADM sixteen dash five three nine three to the city council with a recommendation of approval.
Is that with or without the new language?
Uh, with the new language.
Seconded.
We have a motion from Mr. Hoffman and a second from Ms. Quinlan. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Garner, we call the roll.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Hoskins? Was that now? Sorry.
Keep forgetting. Yes.
Quinlan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Beldon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Petty. Okay, first item on new business. Uh, it's a variance sixteen dash five four two two for the southwest corner of Joyce and Steel Boulevard. This is uptown apartments submitted by Specialized Real Estate Group. And our urban forester, Mr. Scott, has this one.
Good afternoon. Um, basically, the applicants are wanting the variance. Um, they would like to allow a patio in the adjacent green space, which we had for fifteen, when they originally applied for this project, they did have the patio and they showed it stopping at the fifteen-foot green space. But since their application originally went through, we've changed some language and some other codes, and we allow more pedestrian-friendly elements to be in this fifteen-foot green space. And we would normally approve this one administratively, but the language in the other one says, uh, urban zoning district, and this is a C three, so it doesn't quite fit. Um, the buffer is intended to screen the parking, and in this case, the applicant is creating a frontage that is pedestrian-friendly while maintaining street trees, sidewalks, and a four-foot small, uh, landscape buffer. We recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present for this item? If you would, step forward and state your name for the record and add anything else you want.
Uh, this is Michael Pope from Modus Studio. I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, good enough, thank you. Is there anybody from the public that wants to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission, commissioners. Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Hoffman?
Uh, excited about this project. I'm happy to see, um, somebody, even, even though this is zoned, as the urban forester pointed out, even though this, this is zone C three, uh, the applicant has chosen a, uh, an urban building form here, which I think is entirely appropriate, um, and I'm going to be supporting this.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners have comments? Or motions?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Audrey?
I would like to make a motion that variance sixteen dash five four two two, southwest corner of Joyce and Steel Boulevard, uh, be approved per recommendation to staff.
Second. And of course, there is one condition of approval, uh, that the encroachment into the landscape buffer will be limited to the area shown in the attached exhibit.
Yes. Second. That condition.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Audrey and a second from Mr. Brown. Any more comment? Okay.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Quinlan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Beldon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item on new business is variance sixteen dash five four two three for Springfield Drive and Alberta Street. This is the Coes Phase Two submitted by Roush Coleman Homes. Uh, looks like, Mr. Kurth, you have this one, if you would?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, the subject property is located on the north side of West Alberta Street, between Farmington Municipal Boundary and the west, and the Coes Phase One subdivision on the east. Uh, when last applicant came before you, it was for a conditional use permit in a model home within the subdivision. At that time, it was discussed that many of the subdivisions, forty-five lots, are subject to the single-family infill standards, which largely pertain to properties with street frontages under seventy feet, and that the model home did not comply with the ordinance. It became apparent that five building permits were issued counter to the ordinance to begin work on five single-family residences. Uh, the city attorney has since advised that, uh, the applicant is vested in these properties and work cannot be stopped on them. Uh, it also became apparent that the applicant was not aware of this ordinance and that all forty-five lots within the Coes Phase Two subdivision were laid out with non-compliant floor plans. Following a conversation with the applicant, they expressed interest in pursuing a variance for the remaining forty properties. Staff feels that this is precisely the kind of development for which the single-family infill standards were developed, and considering the timeline and number of lots remaining unbuilt, we recommend denial for the applicant's request for a variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurth. Is the applicant here for this item? If you would, step forward, state your name, and anything you'd like to add?
Yes, sir, thank you, commissioners. This is Stephen Lear with Roush Coleman Homes, uh, forty fifty-eight North College here in Fayetteville. Um, we started developing this hundred acres back in two thousand and three. Um, we've since built about two hundred and fifty homes, uh, across the board there, and we're on our last forty-five, uh, lots. And, um, you know, the question's asked, could, could we comply with the ordinance? Absolutely, we could. It's just with, with, uh, an expense that we would like to, like, you know, your consideration, um, for us to finish out what we've done. Um, we've got about seven floor plans that we offer with, it ranges from five to seven elevations. Um, the estimate that we've, they've asked us to, um, as far as the estimate associated with doing new architecture, new construction plans, new bidding, the whole nine yards, were eight to ten thousand dollars a plan. Um, we estimate about ninety days to a hundred and twenty days for that to occur. Uh, by the time that we get new design, um, new value engineering, go through all of the process that we vet, and then to resubmit to our lenders, you know, we're about a hundred and twenty days out from that. In the meanwhile, you know, we, we lose momentum associated with home sales. We, uh, we have a field manager that builds our homes out there that, that is, is pays associated with production, and then we have a salesperson that is, that is out with for about a hundred and twenty days. So we have, uh, we have several things associated with this. It's, uh, like I say, it's been a great partnership as far as the attainable housing aspect of what we do here in Fayetteville and what we feel Roush Coleman provides. Um, I think, uh, we've got, uh, a great project. It's all we can all be proud for, the two hundred and fifty that are there. It's all something we can drive through as we've partnered with the city in the past with the five-acre park. And I think it's been a, it's been a great project altogether, but we would like your consideration and approval to allow us to, to complete out the forty-five lots under those standards with your permission. Been happy, be happy to answer any questions, uh, if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Hoffman?
I have a question for Mr. Lear.
If you would, come back up, please. Yep, thank you.
Uh, does Roush Coleman intend to continue to work in the city of Fayetteville?
Yes, sir.
You intend to comply with the, with the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's, uh, well, that's good news, obviously. Um, it's also good news that, uh, Mr. Lear, uh, in his own words, said that, that they would be able to comply with, with the ordinance on these lots. Um, we passed this ordinance for, for very good reason that we spoke about, I think it was a couple of meetings ago. Uh, saw a very similar item on the agenda at that time. Major difference being that that, that neighborhood was mostly built out, whereas it's currently either, either no... Are there any structures currently under?
I think there's five structures that have been permitted, but that nothing has been occupied.
And where, those, those five structures aren't up for discussion, right? Those are...
That's correct.
Okay. So, yeah, so we're, we're looking at a, a new subdivision that, um, hasn't, hasn't been built, hasn't, you know, hasn't had permanent, uh, permits pulled on it. Uh, I think it's entirely appropriate that they comply with the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Sure, come on back.
This subdivision is, uh, like I say, this is, this is a hundred-acre parcel that we've owned, and we've developed it in phases. So, uh, I'd like to clarify that this is, this is a project that's been forth, you know, been ongoing, and, and we feel, with all due respect, that we're almost to the end. We've, we've got two hundred and fifty of the three hundred there, so we feel as though the majority of it has been built out. This last phase has been a little slow getting there with a little bit of the downturn in the market. Now it's obviously going back in the right direction, so I'd like to offer that clarity if I could, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Quinlan?
May I ask a question of the applicant?
Absolutely.
Sorry for that.
Maybe I just stand there a lot, say, when I just stand up there.
No, I'll stay up here.
Speaking of the rest of the project that's been undergoing and been completed, do any of those lots contain rear-facing or side-access garage?
Uh, I believe there might be one that, on a corner that turns...
Right, yep, thank you. We got to get you on record.
Hi, I'm Amanda Locata with Roush Coleman Homes. We have one that's permitted and under construction now that's a corner lot. It has a side-load garage.
Any of the remaining, um, portion of the neighborhood that's already been constructed, um, kind of elsewhere in the neighborhood, talking about the larger project, are all of those homes front-loaded garages or are there side, side-access or rear?
There's a mix in that, that first phase. There's a mix of front-load, side-load, and rear-load.
Would it be possible to utilize some of those sort of approaches to maintain compliance with the code in, in the new portion?
Some of those lots, what we're faced with is we have a green space that's lining up on... It, they're shallower lots, so most of our plans that we have that would comply with that, that are in our library, don't fit within our setbacks anymore, just because these lots are shallow with our green space that we have. So they don't exactly work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Audrey?
I do agree with Commissioner Hoffman on going forward for all the reasons that we passed this ordinance, uh, previous meetings. However, they're at ninety, eighty, ninety percent through with this particular development, and, you know, it looks... I hate to put them in a situation, I mean, they are a substantial developer, substantial developer within the, uh, community of northwest Arkansas for that matter, and, and hate to see property that's not being able to be developed and not being able to get under contract and not being able to move forward on being sold and get under contract. So, that would be the only thing that I have a major concern with, although we do have, we have approved this, this ordinance, that this is falling under, and for good reason. But I do see a, a hardship in this one case. Now, having said that, I would certainly like to echo the question that Commissioner Hoffman asked, and we do have that answer on record, that all, you know, forthcoming development that you do does comply. I know it would cost money to change your plans now, it would, it would delay you rather significantly, so I'm just concerned of a hardship in this particular case, especially since you're at this near completion point of the project. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Want to go? Oh, sorry, go ahead. Mr. Hoskins first.
Question for staff. The width of these lots, how do they compare to the width of lots in the previous phases of this project?
Um, I think they're, well, the applicant can probably answer it more accurately than I can, but I think probably they're wider. I think in some of the, the previous ones, the Walnut Crossing and then Coes Phase One, they did have some even nar- more narrow lots. I think these are around sixty feet, and some of the other ones were even smaller than that.
Okay, could you pan over to the right just a little bit? Right there, that's good. If you'll notice, there's some houses there that have shared driveways that turn into the, the back of the house. I guess I'm more interested, particularly in those lots, how they are in size compared to these new lots.
I'll let the applicant fix that.
Okay. I guess, I guess you're back again.
As far as the, uh, the homes in Phase One were designed to, to account for the rear access with the rear alley, so we had that, that set of plans, uh, within, designed in accordance with that layout. As far as the specific width, I don't have that on hand. I...
Those aren't the ones I'm asking about.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I can see, I can see in the aerial there the ones that are rear-loaded, obviously.
Mm-hmm.
If you look to the ones towards the western edge...
Yes, sir.
You'll see some houses with shared driveways that come down between the houses. What are we looking at? Yeah, I asked them to. Okay. Again, if you look at the screen up there, see the houses on the western edge of the previous phase? See the two, two houses at the top, as a matter of fact, would be a good example. The shared driveway that comes down between the two and turns into the houses.
Okay.
Okay? Those lots there, would you say they're as, as narrow as the ones that, I mean, they, they kind of look as narrow as the ones that you're working on now?
Um, quite possibly, yes, sir. I mean, uh...
Okay. I think that that design meets the intent of the ordinance, so you actually do have plans that you could utilize on these lots. So, I mean, or I'm, I guess I should ask you that. Do you already have plans that you could utilize on these lots?
Well, we...
They're by getting rid of the hundred and twenty day period and the...
Yeah.
And the redesign and all that?
Well, part of, part of the associated with what we're doing is the side-load and that particular plan, we, I mean, I, it might still be existing in our inventory somewhere, and I guess we could look at that, but the side-load and the dual, and the shared driveway has been more than problematic for, for us moving forward with disputes and, and all of that, and then above. So as far as, that's the reason we haven't looked at going back to any sort of a product like that. I'd also have to double-check the depth, uh, like, uh, like was mentioned, I believe those are quite a bit deeper. A lot of our product with that particular was deeper and narrower associated with that to account for that shared driveway. I know our lots in, uh, the Coes Phase Two are, uh, let's see here. Of course, it didn't print allegedly, did it? Like a hundred and, hundred and twelve, maybe, feet deep? So we would, uh, you know, we'd have to certainly check the depth to make sure we could try to fit something like that. Um, and all honesty, like I say, the reason I would be, not like to go with that again is because of the, all of the conflict that we've had amongst homeowners, and, uh, it's been a real challenge from that standpoint, which is, I understand is a separate issue, but, um, we could certainly check the depth.
What's been the opposition? You've mentioned that a couple of times. What's been the opposition?
Just as far as somebody parking in the driveway, you know, you know, Cox pulls in and pulls on, and works on somebody's house, and they say they can't get out, and then they get into brusque, and then we get a phone call about it, and it's just, you know, it's just one of those things that we see as very problematic from our standpoint, unfortunately, uh, and why they would never buy another one again. So, and I certainly understand that's a different issue. I would have to, to tell you one hundred percent without a doubt, if that would or wouldn't fit, I would have to double-check that, and then we would have to understand where the driveway could and could not go between the two lots, you know, is there an easement there? What easements have to be vacated, associated with it? Um, you know, we could see where it could fit, um, but it, it would once again be counter to our, to our current plan, but it would be closer than where we're at today, uh, but it wouldn't be our first choice in all honesty for those reasons. Just because it creates, once again, it creates the work associated with checking the easements, and, you know, staff can correct me if I'm wrong, as far as what the provisions would be for us to then allow for a shared driveway on a property line. Um, and then where that is and is not allowed, should there be a utility or drainage easement within there? You know, we've got all of our swales cut and, you know, within the two pads, so we'd not like to compromise the grading that's already complete as well. Um, so, you know, the bottom line is, is, you know, we've, we've planned for these plans in this subdivision, um, and, and while I understand that, you know, we, we were completing construction right, and final platted in February, and it was, the ordinance was passed in October, but obviously, the planning for us started pretty much in January of fourteen for us to have a planned lineup that would fit and work. And then we've got marketing material, and once again, that's another, uh, item that we would have to address, um, as far as updating things. And most of, more than all, it's the time. It's like you say, is this, that's, that's where the, that's where we're going to experience probably the most hardship as far as trying to do that, as far as revamping our process and where we're at today. Should we have to pull plans from archives, which honestly, we'd prefer not to do? Uh, uh, and to see where they could and could not fit on a portion of the lots? Um, you know, that, that's, once again, that would take us some time to pay an engineer to evaluate. Uh, uh, if that answers your question.
Um, I'm, yeah, I'm sure it did.
Okay.
Have you all considered, um, the center, the center group of lots, maybe run the rear alley down the middle of that?
Um, I have not considered that.
Moving the screen back over to the right again, please. Up, other way. Go right. Push the screen out. There we go. There, the, there you go, almost, little more.
Yeah.
Okay. In that, in the center section of the, of the neighborhood there...
Mm-hmm.
It looks to me like you could possibly incorporate a, a shared drive there.
Uh, you'd have to double-check the utilities, if there's electric already installed in the rear. Um, it would require removal of electric and additional expense associated with that.
Yeah, has, has somebody, has somebody told you that you can't build driveway over an easement or something?
Um, I, I don't, I mean, it, in between, on a lot line, I, I don't know. I mean, I'd, I'd have to defer to the staff and ask for that specific.
Mr. Chair, you want me to address that?
Please, if you would.
Uh, yeah, a driveway, shared driveway, a parking lot can be over a utility easement. The only easement it probably could not be over would be a drainage easement.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding.
It's very common to have that along the side property line.
Right, that's, that's my understanding as well. Okay, thank you, sir. Um, okay, I think that's pretty much all I had. You know, uh, I feel for you. The, um, none of this is ever fun, of course, and it's never cheap. Um, but, again, we, as you, Christopher Hoffman said last, I think last meeting or whatever, we had a, a similar thing come through, but that was a very small parcel of land in the middle of neighborhoods that are already, are already fully built out and out on the edge of town, and, and, um, um, I didn't see that as, as a practical thing at all, um, as small scale as what it was. But here we're talking about forty-five lots. And, and while I understand it's a portion of a much bigger project, visually, you look at this neighborhood, and this portion is a neighborhood on its own. It's got a neighborhood kind of within a neighborhood kind of thing or what have you. Um, you know, I would hate to vote against you on it because I know the position that you're in. Um, but by the same token, it also appears that, that there could be a compromise, uh, accommodations with some rear drives or what have you. I understand that that comes with an expense as well. But I don't think it would be near the expense as what you had mentioned earlier. Um, as it sits right now, I would find it very, very difficult to support your variance. Um, at least at this point, when it doesn't appear that you've tried to make any adjustments, if that makes sense. Um, um, you know, maybe one of the things you might want to consider, I mean, I don't know how the rest of this panel feels, but one of the things... but one of the things you might want to consider is- is maybe table the item, take a look at it and say, well, maybe we can't do the entire thing the way that the ordinance says or whatever, but- but we can make it much better than what it is by incorporating some rear alleys and that kind of thing, 'cause it looks to me like you've got plenty of room to do that, so.
Uh, cer- certainly, I agree with that. There's- there's opportunity to change it. It goes back to our time constraint, you know, all, you know, every day that we wait is a day that we can't pull a permit and start building a home. So, um, you know, we just, uh, that's- that's ultimately why we're here, is just to be able to move forward with the game plan that we had all intended on moving on forward with, just from a business standpoint, um, and that's- that's ultimately where we're at. There's- I- I agree with you. Things- things can be changed. Uh, however, what we would like to do is move forward so we can, you know, not be- not have that in our- from our perspective, you know, an eighty thousand dollar expense with new plans and then the lost time associated with that, the slowing the momentum, no sales for this person, tho- those are the components that we are really concerned with. I agree that i- it could all be fixed, a- and once again, we- we planned to do this, uh, from, like I say, starting in January fourteen going through, and, um, you know, just it's, like I say, it's unfortunate, um.
Sir, you say that you'd rather have an up or down vote tonight and not- not a tabling, is that what you're saying?
Um, as far as, is there any other- are there any other ideas that- that could be set forth potentially by the commission to help us move in the direction like you suggest as far as an alley?
I'm sure this group up here can give you a lot of ideas. I'm positive of that.
All right.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Chair, I'm- that's all I had or whatever. He's on his own now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Feldman.
I have a couple of questions for the applicant.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, one is, is that the- the curb cuts along West Alberta Street that are shown? They appear to be right- right in line with the boundary between the lots. They appear to be cut for side access to garages.
They're shared driveways, meaning the- the- the plans that we had intended when the- the city had asked us to put those dri- shared driveways in, that, you know, we essentially were gonna have a left-hand and a right-hand home, and then they would have a shared driveway, then the driveway would split.
So, those are side-loaded garages for those?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
They're just shared driveways, and then they're gonna-
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just- they're just a- they're just a shared- they're just a shared point at which the vehicle would access the driveway from the street.
That was helping the other.
That was a city requirement. Oh, believe- I mean- We have no desire to buck the system. I mean, we've- we've tried, and we've been in compliance with all the changes through building codes and- and done that. It's just reached a point now where we've- are bearing a time constraint and an expense that we feel is, um, is worthy of discussion and- and where we come from as- as a- as a business here in Fayetteville, uh, and wanting to just quite simply finish out what our plan was to move on to the next one, which once again, would be in compliance, 'cause it could be then therefore planned for appropriately, um.
My- my other question is probably more of a comment. One of the seven plans has the garage four foot eleven inches back from the furthest extension of that- that front facade.
That's correct.
Are these in equal numbers? Does that- is that one-seventh of the plans?
That's one- correct, that's one of the-
Then one-seventh, not just of the plans, but of what will be built?
Um, we would- it's tough to say. I would expect just on average about- about that, that- that one of those plans will be built, you know, equally as much, just assuming, not- not really knowing where the market's gonna go and what people may or may not particularly fancy, if you will.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Mr. Autry.
Um, seemingly, since Mr. Commissioner Hoskins' line of questioning, I think, it's gotten me swinging back and forth here on the vine. Uh, it may be that you do have additional plans. It sounds like you do. You have them in that area where Commissioner Hoskins, uh, talked about. And I'll just make a comment on the, uh, tabling of this particular motion. I know you're looking at a lot of lost days, but if we could table it for two weeks and you could go back and do some research of how you might could redesign this, 'cause it seems like you would to be a two-week investment versus the possibility of us taking a vote tonight and just really hammering you bad.
Okay.
'Cause I'm swinging kind of back to the other way, although I do see the hardship. It does seem like your firm is- you've got, uh, facilities all over northwest Arkansas that- that might be a good investment of two weeks of your time.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'd hate to see it blown up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, that- that'd be fine. I mean, I certainly appreciate the advice, yes, sir. We can certainly do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Quinlan.
I'll be brief, since we've had a lot of conversation on this.
Oh, you're fine.
But I- I- I agree both with, uh, Commissioner Autry that I have a lot of sympathy, that I know it's- it's not- nobody wants to be in this position. None of- none of us are happy about this. You guys aren't happy about this, but I do agree too with Mr. Hoskins that, um, I think you have shown the variety and flexibility that you guys are- have the potential to provide in homes, driveway access, et cetera, directly adjacent to this. And we've- we've seen that you guys are very capable of providing a- a wide range of garage, you know, solutions, um, but I- I don't know that this is a site that size-wise, slope-wise, et cetera, um, it's impossible to meet the intent of the code, and I think the intent of the code is good. Um, so I- I think I agree with the advice that's been given, that tabling and seeing how many of the lots could be brought into compliance easily with existing plans, um, and only discussing those that would be a true hardship might be the best approach. I- I, at this point, would not be able to support, um, just based on the information we've seen today.
Okay. So, just- just far as my understanding, if, uh, the- I don't think the lots are wide enough for us to do a side entry. I don't think they're- for us to be able to do a side-load entry, um, the rear access. I- I know we don't have enough room to build an alley around the perimeter with the tree protection ordinance and likely the- the alleyway in the back of the island due to the electric being in, aside from the cost. Um, you know, I think where we're at is- is redesigning our floor plan still. I don't, you know, or- or trying to find a, you know, an old plan somewhere that we've built. Uh, those over there, what, you know, that- that'd be the other option, but, um, you know, I certainly- certainly respect that and- and, uh, we'll, uh, we'll be able to try to find a solution that, uh, works for everyone.
Mr. Chair. Ms. Rothman.
Yeah, I- I- just in terms of solutions, I wanna- I- I agree with, uh, Commissioner Hoskins. I think you can run an alley down the center of that block. That'll really work. Uh, the- the other thing that I would look at is, I'm just checking out these, uh, these shared access, how these- the side-loaded shared drive houses that you've got, and the other one that are paired, a left-hand and right-hand. Um, I would look at, uh, building all either left-hands or right-hands. Uh, and if you do that, what you can have is a situation where you don't have a shared drive, but the drive can still be built over the property line. Okay, so it's- there's- there's an access easement there, but it gets rid of that issue of the utility people parking in the- does that- does that make sense?
So, you say- you're saying you have the drive wider to allow dual access?
No, I'm saying you build- so, I'm looking at the- the- the houses that Mr. Hoskins, Commissioner Hoskins just pointed you to, those right there, where the mouse is, right there.
Oh, yes, sir.
Those guys. So, that's a left-hand house and a right-hand house, right?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
I'm saying if you built all- if you built only left-hand houses, uh, you could run a driveway up the left side of each of those houses-
Yeah.
That's split across the property line.
Okay.
Right, are you following me, uh?
Do we- do we have any impervious areas associated with that?
Um, we, yeah, I mean, they- we'd- he'd- I always, as we discussed, they'd have to look at the drainage easement locations and things like that, but- Uh, but what I'm getting to is, I, you know, that's- that- those are just a couple of solutions that I see right here in front of me that- that seem plausible. And if- if I- if just in a couple of minutes of looking at this, uh, I can see already a few, you know, plausible solutions, then there's no way I can support a variance.
Thank you.
Okay, so it looks like the majority of the commission wants to table your project-
That's fine.
-for two weeks-
Thank you.
To give you the opportunity to look at it a little closer. Are you agreeable with that?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, is there a motion as such, or do you? Mr. Hoskins. Okay. Understood.
Um, I can make a motion to table variance sixteen dash fifty-four twenty-three for until the next scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hoskins and a second from Commissioner Autry. Is there any more comment? Okay. Mr. Garf, if you would, call roll.
Now will.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Hunland.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kirk.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Dalton.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you in two weeks. Next item on new business is variance sixteen dash five four two seven for five twenty-one North College. This is the Twin Arches Apartments submitted by Jorgensen and Associates. Uh, looks like we have Mr. Thompson this evening.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, um, property is located at five twenty-one North College. If you would zoom in just a little bit, please. It's, um, the old Twin Arches Motel, which I think many of us are familiar with. It's now a, uh, dem- derelict, uh, nineteen fifties motor lodge with, um, apartments and, uh, and attached garages. Uh, this project is, uh, the- the variance before us has to do with a- an SIP that's been brought forward. It will involve the demolition of this, uh, derelict building and the redevelopment with it- with about fourteen apartment units on the site. The request is, in order to proceed with that, uh, small-site improvement plan, uh, there are three variances that would, uh, need to be, uh, granted according to the applicant. Uh, the first is, uh, a variance of the parking lot design standards. We allow approximately, well, exactly thirty-five percent and no more of those provided parking places to be compact parking places. A standard parking place is nine by nineteen. A compact parking place can be reduced to as much as fifteen by seven and a half. The applicant is providing nineteen parking places here. They would like to request that additional two of those be compact spaces. Uh, that would be a total of approximately forty-two percent compact spaces instead of seven. Staff is recommending approval of that, um, in- in that, um, we believe they'll have ample parking for these fourteen dwellings. The additional compact spaces, in our- in our opinion, won't be necessary, um, uh, all the time, and they will increase, uh, their ability to save some particular trees that are along the west side of the property, and it better works with their, uh, with their topography. It begins to get very steep right toward the back, so we do recommend in favor of- of variance number one. For variance number two, uh, chapter one sixty-six twenty-three requires, that's urban residential design standards, those require that, uh, everyone that has a unit facing the street, a public street, has a door. That unit should always have a door that kind of faces that side and comes out. We try to, uh, use that as a tool for creating a, uh, positive, active, and inviting, uh, urban landscape and streetscape. And I think this is a central- a central, uh, element that we are able to, uh, to encourage people to activate their street with, is this, uh, is this, uh, street door. And so, we don't see a particular reason in this case, if you would show us a- an elevation. We don't see a reason why that, uh, is unfeasible or can't be done in this case, and, uh, very strongly recommend that that be included in the project in order to build that- in order to build that streetscape here on- on North College. Variance number three, uh, is variance for architectural design standards. Uh, again, uh, in this case, um, the building must have a, uh, variation of materials, uh, a certain amount of inset so we don't create a- a long, um, very, um, straight wall without a lot of articulation. Um, we look for balconies, bays, porches, windows, dormers, et cetera, in order to achieve that. Uh, it was our opinion that those were not being met by the elevation. And if you would, uh, actually open that elevation on the- on the desktop that was provided today. This came from the applicant today, and it's a little bit better, I think, uh, interpretation of what they plan to do there. I've looked at it briefly. I haven't looked at it, uh, point by point, but I do think that it, uh, elevates unorthodox, uh, in a certain sense, uh, may certainly meet some of those, at least enough of those, um, elements to potentially, uh, not need variance three. I would like for you to go ahead and look at that, though. In particular, the applicant pointed out today, and, um, you know, I don't know that we can see it very clearly here, but, uh, perhaps in- in shadow, you may see it the very best. But underneath the- that black vertical element there that projects from the wall, that's actually an address sign, so it says five twenty-one. If you, um, right below that, right there, there's actually a- and there may be another. We go down, go down, uh, to the next page. I think it shows it a bit more clearly if we have that one, and we may not, and that's fine. Uh, it appears to be a steel piece that comes down and wraps that sign. There's a bay window in there, just looking north and south. Uh, very unusual, doesn't look like a bay window to me when I'm looking at something flat, but I think it potentially meets that, uh, that requirement, up to you again. And, um, you know, they do have, uh, a deeper inset there, and I think it- it reflects better in this elevation than it did when you're looking at a different, uh, in a different elevation. So, I'm gonna leave that up to your determination. So, we were, uh, recommending against, uh, number one, or, excuse me, for number one, for the compact spaces, against the ground-floor entry variance, and we were recommending, uh, against number three for- for those architectural elements, uh, a variance of those. Um, and I think if you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to- glad to do it. I do have, uh, conditions of approval we could discuss if you feel like approving some of those. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Thompson. Is the applicant here? If you would step forward, state your name and add any more comments you would like.
My name is Evan Niehaus, um, with Jorgensen and Associates, representing the owner here. And so, I guess you guys can see that, um, we're trying to do something relatively unorth- orthodox and kind of interesting, uh, you know, keep Fayetteville funky, right? But, um, anyway, it's- it's gonna be a nice building. It's gonna be well-done. There's gonna be well-articulation on the front. You're gonna be able to see through those panels into the courtyard. It's gonna be a wide sweeping staircase that comes down and, you know, very grand entrance up to the front, nice lettering.
Is the staircase usable to be walked?
The staircase will go- go the whole way and will attach to the future plans. We've talked to the engineering department and how- how wide it is, where it's gonna connect, the elevations. So, we have steps that can be within the easement, within the access, thirty inches or less, that- that go down and will connect to the sidewalk. Yes, it will be usable. Um, do you mind continuing? So, this is what it looks like now. I think everybody's well-aware. We wanna move on from that, and we wanna build something nice that- that Fayetteville can- can appreciate. Um, so here, if we touch on the first variances, so everybody, I guess, is well-aware of what's going on. This is the, um, on the south side, those are the parking spaces we're looking to get a compact space on. So, those will be standard nine feet wide. They will be fifteen feet in depth, though. Um, oftentimes, another two feet is just granted in general because, um, you- you can overhang a parking space by a couple of feet by just pulling your car up to the wheel stops. So, really, we're asking for a relatively small variance to preserve some trees and stay a little bit away from the, um, the property line there. We've already taken out, um, something like three spaces to save some of the trees. So, that's- that's that variance. If we can continue on. Um, infill, number one goal, Fayetteville. This is a prime example of infill. So, this is something that is from the actual presentation made to the Planning Commission to when it was coming through as urban residential design standards. This is, um, I think, standard of what they were trying to get across is that, you know, most homes face the front. Most have apartments. Most have, you know, typical entries, typical straightforward entries, typical places. And we're not trying to do that. It's a nice facade. It's a- it's a well-done facade. It will look good. Um, but this isn't what we're trying to do. Um, that's just another example of like, hey, this is not what we want, this is what we want, but, you know, we're not really doing that. And I think you're well-aware of that. Um, this is the intent of the ordinance, enhance Fayetteville's identity and actual viability. I think this project does that. It's a very nice project. It'll look good. It'll face the street. Creates appealing street scheme. We're gonna have a wide sweeping in- Creates appealing street scheme. We're gonna have a wide sweeping entry into it. Um, parking is to the side, not in front. It's gonna be completely detached. Attractive residential facade. I guess, you know, everybody's opinion of attractive is hit and miss, but I think it looks good. And pedestrian circulation. This is the connection, you know, um, the actual ordinance reads, you can have one entry per two units. This is a very wide entry. It's, it's, I don't know, maybe twenty feet wide. And the access, when you get to it, actually from the units itself, is between ten and eight feet. So by code, I mean, if you look at it in a very liberal terms, we may not even need a variance, if you, if you look at it in a certain way. Um, there is one entry. There will be one gated entry that will be open or closed easily. It'll be see-through. Um, so you will be able to see into the courtyard. It's not gonna be ugly. It's not gonna be a roll-up gate, as it does mention in the staff report. That's not our intention. Um, but anyway, if you wanna continue. Facade again, and I think Yumi had some, some things she wanted to mention particularly about the architecture.
If you would sta- if you would state your name.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Yumi Rozinski. I'm the architect on this project. I'm with Architects, uh, two two six. I wanted to adjust you all in regards to the, um, trying to get a variance for having just one entry. As we know, that College Avenue has changed over time. It's not a pedestrian street anymore. Uh, so my goal as the architect is to follow the code, but the code, as you all know, it, it's all, it's written to the minimum standard, right? It's for us to, to look at and say, this is the minimum that the city is asking us to. Along with codes like for fire codes, these codes are written because somewhere, somewhere along the way, something happened, so these codes came about to make things better. So, um, you know, I'm looking, so I'm looking at the code and trying to address the front entry. Um, you know, we were, I was talking to Quinn Thompson about this, and he said, it's my, it's, it's, of course, they're denying a hardship on the two entries. It's not hard putting the, yeah, I, I totally understand why that's, that's been denied. It's not hard putting two entries in the front. If you look at the existing building, for me as a designer to go in and put two small doors on a project of this scale, in terms of the scale of College Avenue. College Avenue has changed over time, so I think it's our, my obligation, our obligation to put a building there that respects the scale of College Ave. So it's not a residential street. It's, it's becoming more urban. So when I'm putting up a building there, it's, it will be really easy for me to look at that and say, okay, two entries, two units, let's put it there. But that's being my optic, right? So I'm really just thinking about, you know, the, the users of those two units, and that's it. I'm not thinking about you or I driving down that street, my kids living in Fayetteville, and having buildings that are putting, uh, put up, that's not respecting the scale of the street. So, so our intention was to design an elevation that would be more grand, um, to put a, a porch that can receive more than just the two person that the units are on the front. But to, to provide a big courtyard so everyone can enjoy. But, uh, and also, you know, this grand stair, uh, in terms of its material, we wanted to utilize some of the, um, existing veneer that's there. Um, and we're gonna demolish all that stuff, but the veneer there, if you look at it, I mean, it's beautiful stone. That stone can be reused. So, you know, we thought about, why don't we just take that and just, and just, uh, wrap the, the new stair? The height of where that plinth is, that's the existing entry area that's there. The Google Earth image that shows us the, the existing condition, it's really, it's deceiving. I mean, that thing climbs up about eight feet. So we wanted to provide a grand stair, again, to a scale of the street, um, so that the, the, the people driving by, the people that are living there, can actually use it. Not just the two people that are on the front, but everyone else that's there. Because College, I mean, there's, you know, you have the motorcycle, uh, events. You have, you know, stuff that happens on College Ave. It would be nice for people to, to be able to hang out there and, and sit. And IGA or the, um, the new grocery store, I mean, that's just down the street, right? So you want people to be able to use that as a, a, a main way of coming in and out. I mean, we provided a pedestrian connection from the parking lot, but I think it's also my, my job is to provide them with an access where they want to walk, right? So that it, it feels better to, you know, walk downtown, walk to the store, instead of saying, you know what? I don't wanna go out to College Ave because there's really not a pedestrian-free entry. So that's why we've done that. Um, so the materials, yeah, we do have, uh, variations of materials. The inside of where the entry is, we wanna make a really nice wrought iron, uh, pivot gate. But on the inside, we wanna line it up with the, with the wood that Mark White normally uses. He loves that soft wood look. Um, and then, again, with the, we wanted to put, uh, super graphics in there just to respond to the, the scale of where this building is. Any other, any questions?
We'll call you back. We have some more questions.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on this item? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commissioners. Mr. Chair. Mr. Hoffman.
Yeah, I have, uh, some thoughts about this project. I think it's a, fir- first of all, I just wanna congratulate you on the project. I think it's, uh, really interesting. I think the, the idea of courtyard housing in this location is, uh, particularly exciting. I think technologically, it's, it's infinitely appropriate. Um, I've thought a lot about this project, uh, the, the parking, by the way, I have no problem with that. Uh, won't even discuss that. Thought a lot about this project. The, it's, it's basically between a half block and a block away from two of the most desirable neighborhoods in Fayetteville. Uh, it's on a street that is about to see millions of dollars in, in public investment, uh, to, to try to make it a more pedestrian-friendly area. So, uh, yeah, given that, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about just sort of dismissing College Avenue as, as sort of an, an auto-oriented street or, or saying that it's, it's not appropriate to respond to a pedestrian scale. Um, you know, and then just looking at, at the elevation, there, there's sort of, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't mean to sound pejorative, but there, but there's, there's sort of a pessimism about, about the street that's embodied by that kind of screening off. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it feels almost like a little bit like sort of Detroit After Dark or something. Uh, and there, there's an edge to that that's, that is, that is interesting, and I, and I can, I can see why, you know, you're sort of fascinated by this austere facade and this, the, the grand scale of this, of this entry, but then I don't understand why we put that screen there. Uh, maybe I would be more comfortable, we, maybe we should probably talk about the screen. Maybe I would be more comfortable if, if the screen were, you know, just sort of something that was up between the hours of, you know, ten PM and six AM or something like that. I can, I can almost see, uh, you making a case for that, but, um, you go to so much trouble to create this, this grand entry, these, these beautiful stairs. Uh, we have very few entries in, in the city of Fayetteville that, that do what you're doing, and, and I think it's interesting, and I, and I, it's so... To me, it's sort of disappointing to, to then see this, this screen behind it, because it, it's, um, again, it's, to, to me, it's, it seems a little bit pessimistic. Unnecessarily so, given the vibrancy of the area and, and what's about to happen here. I think you guys are gonna do something amazing here, uh, but, but you're just gonna be the first of many. There's gonna be a lot of great things that happen on this section of college. I think I'll keep it at that for now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hoskins.
Thank you very much. Um, I guess I'm a little bit confused by the elevations. What I see on the screen right now is something that looks like a horizontal metal facade, but I look in my packet, and there's a, another sketch that says Cedar Shake. Um, uh, maybe the architect could step up and kinda unconfuse me about that.
Yep, if you would, please. Thank you.
That was submitted a couple of weeks ago, and last week we sent in another rendering. I guess I just not got it, they didn't get in there. So there was, there was one last week that was updated, and then there was one today, so, sorry.
Okay, so is it your intent that the enti- this entire building's gonna be a metal facade?
No, it is actually out of hardy. We wanted to do Cedar Shake, but because it's in the fire district, we have to only use, um, non-combustible material. And so with the hardy, I'm, I'm able to, um, achieve that, you know, the, the non-combustible material assembly.
You know, hardy makes a shake, right?
Yes, but it's a, but Mark wants to use the real thing, so we thought, you know, why don't we?
I bet you that. Okay. Um, on the variance on, on the, uh, parking, I don't have a problem with that. On the variance, on the, uh, I guess the entrances, you know, honestly, I don't really have a problem with that either. The only thing that I kinda have a problem with is that it, it kinda looks like these are stairs to nowhere. In other words, you get to the top of the stairs and you're not going through that fence regardless. Is that the case?
No, the, the gate is, is open. I mean, it's just, I mean, it's a pivotal gate. It's just not locked. We can't lock it. And it's something, you know...
That's just not shown on this plan? Not shown on the elevations?
There's, I think in the plan, it's just shown as a, just demarcated a line there. But, you know, in terms of, you know, when I, when I first looked at this thing, Mark wanted a, um, his idea was to put a, a swimming pool inside. And I just, I told Mark, uh, the owner, I said, you know, I wanna be, I mean, a pool is hard in that area. And I love these little urban infill area, but to be able to create a space where a lot of people can use it to put barbecue grills out there and just have a, you know, just to have that little community come out and, and hang out. And I thought, well, maybe in order to provide something like that, we give them a, you know, a little more privacy, say, okay, there is a screen there, but it's a filigree.
How does that relate to the gate, ma'am? How does that relate?
The gate?
How does that relate to the entrance of this thing? The pool and all that?
In terms of how it's, it's open, anybody can come through it. It's just, it's a, can you flick to the screen that it shows a pivot, the black pivot painted gate? There should be an image on there. Go down. There it is. Okay.
Okay.
We wanted to do something like that, where they can have easy access to it, but also, um, again, gives, gives them that more privacy behind there.
Okay, so...
And not be a wall.
The ev- the el- the elevations you're trying to get approved tonight, is this indicative of the elevations? Is this how you're gonna build it?
Yes, if we're going to do a gate, we would do a gate like that. Or come in with, with some sort of a plant or some sort of trees, just to give them a little bit of, of privacy.
Okay. Okay, it sounds to me like there's some of the stuff that's kinda still up in the air then. Is that a safe assumption?
I'm sorry?
Sounds to me like some of this is still up in the air then. Is that a safe assumption?
Uh, not with the gate. I mean, we would like to have a gate there, but if you all don't think it's a, a good idea. And, and, and I, I understand what you're saying. Um, you know, if, if we, I don't think it's going to hurt the project if we get rid of the gate and put up something that's, that provides a little bit more privacy, you know, or, you know, that, that same type of privacy, maybe a bamboo grove or something in the front that can do the same thing.
I think our most important thing that we're trying to get across here is that we have one entry across the front, not two accesses out of two units coming off the front.
Yes.
And these, these were, these are, is an existing foundations we're trying to reuse. So we're building it all in the same spot, same foundation. And another reason for having no separate entries is that we're coming off the parking lot with handicap access and getting to the units. And to try and get handicap access around to the front is, is just gonna be impossible.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm obviously doing a terrible job asking my question. I'm just doing a terrible, terrible job. Okay, let me rewind. Back to the elevation, okay? It, it appears from the elevation that you have steps to nowhere.
It goes to the front sidewalk.
Allow me to finish, please.
Yeah, let, let Mr. Hoskins speak.
Yep. Wow.
Keep going.
Okay. It appears that these steps go up to this flat area and to the fence that's there that nobody's going through. In other words, there is no, it doesn't look like there's an entrance at all. That's, that's my point. I understand that, that you're not willing to put the individual entrances or what have you as required by code. And, and generally, I don't have a problem with this type of design, because within that code, I've said before, you can't have one size fits all. You don't, I mean, not every building can be the same, okay? This type was, in my opinion, this type was good architecture sometimes. What I'm trying to find is the good architecture, okay? Um, it looks like, even though it's a fence, it appears to be, uh, basically the, a gated community with no gate. Does that make sense? Okay, and so I'm trying to figure out where the, is there some type of delineated entrance at the front of this building, or the appearance of one? That's what I'm getting at. Um, and also, um, the, uh, the articulation on the front, on the front of the building, um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that a bay window this big does that. So anyway, that's all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, Chair. Mr. Hoffman.
Yeah, I, I, I think I know where you're, I think I know where you're going with this, and I, and I, I agree with you. Um, it's, it's a, it's a scale issue, so it's not, you know, it, it's, it's not just about the, the sort of materiality of the, of this, of this fence, which, you know, it, it's some distances can, could either look like, you know, the, the, the gate that Seven-Eleven rolls down in front of their store when they're ready to close down, or it could look like this, you know, kind of beautiful, uh, modern gate that, that you're showing here. Uh, so it's, it's not necessarily just about the materiality, although that's an, that's one aspect. It's also about the fact that if I'm walking along this street, uh, there is, there is nothing in, in a sort of pedestrian scale that would denote entry. Does, does that make sense?
I, I, I think I know what you're talking about, but in terms of, once, and, and, and I apologize for that rendering. I mean, that rendering should have, you know, you look at it, one, the scale of the stone, two, there's going to be handrails and guardrails, and there's going to be other retaining walls that are going to have...
We need to see that. We can't really have, like, hypothetical conversations about stuff like that. But, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not enough, like, if you, if you treat that entire opening in the same way, yes, you may have a man gate there that a person can walk through, and yes, in a very sort of technical sense, that's an entry. But in terms of urban form, it's not anything that anybody can relate to unless they're, you know, driving by in a car. And if you're driving by in a car, then yeah, ooh, entry. I got, I get it. But it's a, it's a, it's a different scale of activity that takes place on a sidewalk, and that's really what we're trying to create. I mean, that's what the intent of this ordinance is, is, is to try to create places and spaces that people can relate to as they're walking along the street. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Let me, let me ask a question, Ms. Dalton, real fast, so if I'm, I just wanna make sure I'm, I hadn't heard from everybody yet, but I feel like that most people are okay with the parking portion, variance. But I, okay, we'll get to it. I just wanna get a feel for everybody else. And then the ground floor entries, individual entries, it's not necessarily an issue, but that mixed with architectural design standards may be an issue. Is that where we're heading? Okay. Ms. Dalton.
Okay. Um, I have a degree in architecture, so I get, I get why you're going for a monumental scale. I think it's very brave of the developer to choose to do residential development here, because commercial would be so much more financially, you know, advantageous. Um, I, I get it's a commercial street, so this is designed to look like a commercial building. Um, and our codes, our codes are designed, you know, they're, they're written for it to look like a residential building, only this is blending in with the commercial architecture around it. I, I get that. Um, I, I can understand needing something that's, that says entrance in a, in a way that, um, that the big hole may not. But I think it's a beautifully designed project. I like the courtyard. Um, in other cultures, this is a norm. Um, and, and I think that it, in relationship to Lacuna Modern and to Starlight Development, it fits right in. Um, there, there is nothing else residential on that street except for buildings that used to be residences, but they're now commercial buildings. Um, I do walk this street, um, not often, but I do walk the street through that section. Um, and I think that it could be a pleasant experience if, if it's landscaped appropriately, but that's just my opinion.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Autry. Uh, parking lot's fine. I think it is with, well, we'll hear from others here in a minute. Uh, it seems, and I love this, I've been waiting for this project to happen for years, and I love the design...
Uh, it seems, and I love this, I've been waiting for this project to happen for years, and I love the design. Quite honestly, I would not want to see two doors. It would, that would just totally ruin the look, and you're just going, why'd they stick two doors? We understand why, but it, it just doesn't fit the, the, uh, the design and the lines of the building. In fact, it would break them up so much that you, uh, it would be difficult. The sizes of, well, in that one east elevation, I think, I'm looking at two different drawings we're seeing here on this deal. Uh, one was a vertical window, if, that's what we're going to call it, the other one was horizontal. What are the sizes?
See, one that's on, well, again, there's another image that's-
Yeah, that one's showing the horizontal, that last picture, and this, this other one-
That one is three feet tall by, um, twenty inches wide.
Twenty inches, and the one underneath the five twenty-one signs about the same?
That one is, I think that one's three feet tall, and it, it pokes out about two feet.
Okay, the same width?
Yes.
Okay.
And it comes off, it, it comes, it's, it's from a kitchen, so the, the countertops, they can, they can, uh, look out and, and view north and south of college.
Okay, and the screen, I'm not, I don't have any heartache over, uh, the only thing, in fact, I think it's pretty cool detail, actually. And it, just a simple stupid question from my simple little mind is, why can't we leave that revolving gate out? Just a question, we can get to it later. I have no problems with the plan whatsoever. I'd love, love to see you start over tomorrow morning, but, uh, I'll let other commissioners go. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown.
Yes, yes. Uh, if you could just stay there for a second, thank you. I, I, I do want to congratulate you on, I think it's a, it's a very attractive design. There, as far as the parking, uh, I don't have a problem with the fact that you'll have some compact spaces and maybe a few more. My experience, though, is I think we might need to make sure there's, there's something in there requiring some sort of signage, or painted, uh, compact. Is that covered in, under the regulations of the city? Because that can be a real problem where you have, uh, people that live there that don't have a compact car and park in a compact space.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Actually, where you do have compact spaces, that is a requirement, Mr. Brown. Do you label that? Typically, we do it, uh, in paint, uh, on, on the pavement. Yes, sir.
Now, I, I do notice also that in the, in the plan view, um, you have a, an area called, demarked as parking, no, no parking. Is that the entrance, there, there's a break in the wall there where-
That's correct.
-patrons can go to the parking lot and to their units.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and, and, uh, architecturally, I, I like the grand stairway. I think that's starting to get at bringing the, the pedestrian experience. It's adding some interest there. I think where things might be breaking down a little bit is I can sense that you've got a lot of detail in your mind about the, what you want this to look like, but that's not being communicated to us. If there would be an opportunity to better define, you know, what that front is going to look like and how that's going to relate to the sidewalk and tie into the sidewalk. In fact, in that view that we're looking at, it doesn't even show a sidewalk, you know? It would be interesting also, uh, if you're going to use plant material and landscaping to add, um, uh, interest in the pedestrian environment and tying it with College Avenue. I know, we, we were talking about, uh, the fact that the city is spending a lot of money in improving College Avenue to try and improve the pedestrian experience. And I, that's what excites me most about your project, how you're coming down to the street. And I, again, I like this, uh, grand stair, but I think where we're breaking down is maybe just seeing your, your vision. You know, it's hard for us to see that. I don't know if, if there's a possibility to table it for a short period of time to, so you have an opportunity to, to, to present your vision. But in general, just so you know where I've, where I'm coming from, I don't have a problem with the, with the parking lot variance. Uh, I don't have a problem with the doorway along the, variance on the doorway. I can see where that could just be totally counter to your, your image, you know, that you're trying to present as an architect. But I also understand the concept of the, behind the requirement, because we want to make this a pedestrian deal to it. But I think you, I think you understand that and can present that, that to us. And I, and, and, and I don't have a problem with the, uh, variance of the material either. Since everyone, though, has thrown their two cents in on this, I'll take my opportunity to do that. What do you, what do you think about pushing that screen back? So from a street view, it's an open, pure, you know, opening, a pure opening, unrestrained, inviting. But then have the screen start at, if you're looking down on your, your, uh, interior, uh, plan, I don't know if you want to bring that up. Uh, I can see where you have a walkway going to a, a courtyard, a little courtyard area. Maybe put the screen back there. I don't know. You could see it.
Yeah, right now, except that four feet.
But it would be back in, it would be back, you know, inside. So it wouldn't be, it, it wouldn't be presented as a barrier to entry. It would just be an interesting element, you know, as part of the courtyard. But that's just two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me ask a question, since everyone seems to be good with variance number one. Can we, do you have any issue if we break this up? At least give them, push them forward, at least on piece of this?
Sounds good.
Does anybody have an issue with that?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I add, uh, I, I think in terms of the parking, especially since they're nine feet wide, I think that's entirely appropriate. They are shown with wheel stops in, uh, plan. Would it be appropriate with these shorter spaces for us to allow, those wheel stops from the compact spaces to not be installed? That would allow a wider, it would seem less compact without the wheel stops installed.
The code requires some sort of a wheel barrier, whether it's a curb or a wheel stop. So I, I, I don't know if they have curb, they could get rid of the wheel stops, make them a little bit extra space. Um, the other, I mean, if they don't have any curb or wheel stops, they need something so a vehicle won't roll off into grass.
Okay. Is anybody interested in making a motion on the first variance?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Quinlan.
I'd like to move that we approve the compact spaces of this standard item.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Quinlan and a second from Mr. Brown, I believe that's great, on allowing variance number one for compact spaces. Is there any more comment on that? Okay, Mr. Gardner.
Double?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Quinlan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Mr. Chair. Mr. Hoffman.
Ask something first? I don't know if you're going to make a motion or not.
Mr. Hoffman has the floor right now, so, one second.
Um, Ms. R- uh, R- Ruzinsky, um, do you, I, I always, I always get a little bit nervous that we, we start, like, redesigning projects up here, which is not at all what I, what I want to do or what I have intention of doing. But at the same time, I'm, I'm always concerned that, that we provide sort of a credible path forward for somebody. Do you, do you feel like you have enough from, from us to, to move forward with this?
I do, and, um, I think once we go back and talk with the owner, he's going to want to get rid of the gate because the gate was not his idea. It was my idea as, I mean, and this sounds terrible, but as a theme, I mean, I went to college at Syracuse, and I wanted to be in a, if I was going to run, I wanted to be in a place I felt, I felt safe. So I told Mark, I said, Mark, I said, if I were a girl, if I were nineteen, I wanted my own studio. I think I would like it if you put a gate there, because then I would feel a little bit better. You know, for him, it's like, God, how much am I spending? Well, I want to do a really nice gate. Well, I mean, it was, it was a real, I mean, I had to really fight him on this. He didn't want a gate. It's, it's, you know, why is he going to put twenty-five thousand dollars on a gate, right? It would be much better, I mean, so for, for me to tell him, hey, there's a gate bomb, he'll be like, great, get rid of it. But, so that's why it was, it was more, it was more, you know, thinking about when I was back in college, how I would feel to be in a space like that. So that's where that came from. It wasn't the owner driven, so...
Uh, thank, thank you for that description. I, you know, I, I think you've got a highly competent building here. I think it's going to be great, and I think you're really close. And, uh, what I want to do is, is table the, uh, remainder of the variances for a, a couple of weeks and give you another, another shot at this. Um, would that work for you?
The variance would be not, omitting the two entries, so we-
So, so we would table both of those. We would table the, uh, uh, design standards as, as well as, as well as the two entries and, and let you basically sort of repropose.
So the design standard, I, I guess I'm confused. We were talking about, okay, the design standard not meeting, like, having the porches one, a design, one element, and the other one was having a bay window. What, what am I, am I missing?
Do you want to clarify?
Yes, I'll talk some. I think also, if I'm hearing from the commissioner, right, it sounds like several of the commissioners are in favor of the building as proposed if the gate is gone. If that's correct, I would recommend you go ahead and move forward and approve it, um, or at least have a motion on the floor. If you feel like there's substantial redesign that you're requiring, then that's when you would want to table the item. I'm just hearing some mixed messages, so I think we need to be just clear with the applicant on what you're looking for here.
They've asked a variance for the design standards, and you can grant a variance on the condition that the gate is not there.
Okay, uh, I mean, you know, I, I, I think that there's a couple of different, there's a lot of different ways forward for you as a designer. You know, it could be a landscape thing, it could be a, something with a, you know, a different level of articulation on the gate. I didn't want to sort of box you into one thing.
Right.
But if, if you would prefer that we just move, uh, move forward just without the gate, is that?
Yes.
That you prefer that?
I would rather move forward without the gate, because I know that's what the owner would say, get rid of the gate.
Okay, okay. That sounds fine. I, I would, I'd be fine with that, if somebody wants to make that motion.
Let me jump in there, because Mr. Brown had some comments that were way more than just the gate, so, yeah.
The, the, let me sure, let me make sure I understand the variances. We have a variance on this, the parking spaces, which I don't have a problem with. Then we have a variance, variance on the, the design standards. There's two of them. One related to door accesses onto College Avenue, and then a variation of material along College Avenue.
But we have, I think we're, we're at two, because our first submission was a flat elevation, and I told Quinn, I said, I understand why you didn't see the recesses. So when I showed him the three dimensional elevation, he goes, okay, I see it now. You do meet those. So the variances would be the parking, and it would be for having one entry instead of multiple. Those are the two.
The, 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 the concern that I have, again, the parking is not a problem. Uh, not having doors on the front is not a problem. The concern I have is that I don't quite, from the, the general design standards point of view, from what I'm looking at here, I can't see how your, 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 your building relates to the public space, to the, to the sidewalk and to College Avenue. And, and that's what concerns me. Right now, you're showing us just one element, the grand stairway going up there. But I don't see how that ties into the sidewalk. I don't see how, uh, it, it sounds like you're going to have some landscape elements going on there to, to make that a more interesting and attractive space for pedestrians to, to occupy. But I don't see any of that. And that's so from a design, so from approving a design standard variance, it's difficult for me to know, you know, what's going on. So I, I'm kind of in line that maybe, uh, if you had, if, if, we can approve the, the parking lot, but the, 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 the other two designs, the design standard variance or approval of, that the building, you know, meets our design standards, let alone the variances, I need more information from the, from the standpoint of the presentation. That, that's what I am-
I should note that the statute, talking about the Architectural Design Standards, Section one six six point two three D, does not mention anything about landscaping or anything like that. It talks about the building.
No, no, I'm just talking about how with all the, uh, uh, it's located on College Avenue, and the intent of the ordinance, the way it's written, is to improve the pedestrian experience as it relates to the structure. I'm trying to, I'm trying to see how that is going to be handled. I, I can see that they have a, you know, the element of the grand staircase, so to speak, but I, I don't, it's hard to, to, to make a judgment about the, uh, the design standard, whether they're meeting that.
Mr. Chair.
That's just my opinion.
Are you done, Mr. Brown? Okay, Ms. Melvin.
It's my understanding we approved variance one.
We did.
Variance two would, had to do with being no primary pedestrian entry for the two residential units that are adjacent to the street. That is what variance two says. Variance three is wanting her to go back and put balconies, bays, or bay windows, porches, dormers, porticoes, and turrets because it was understood that she didn't have that. Those are the two other variances we haven't dealt with.
That's correct.
I don't hear anybody having any troubles with either of those issues. There are other issues people may have troubles with, but not with either of those. So I can't figure out why we don't-
You're free to make a motion if you feel like it. If you feel comfortable with them, you're free to make a motion.
Um, just do one at a time. I move that we approve, uh, variance two of, duh, 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 duh. Oh, of one, of sixteen dash five four two seven, it's the five twenty-one North College Twin Arches Apartments.
Correct. Chair.
Mr. Hoffman.
I, I just want to point out, I can't, I can't support either one of these variances, uh, with, without some, some sort of discussion of, of, of the entry. Uh, we, we've discussed at length, the screen, we could eliminate the screen, we could redo the screen, we could, there's, there's all sorts of issues that we've, that we've gone through that are completely relevant to both of these variances, and I, and I cannot support them as, you know, I, I can't support this project in its current form, so I just want to point that out.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Hoffman. I'm agreeing with Christian Hoffman. Um, generally, I like the project, okay? There's just not enough information. There's not enough information for me to make an educated decision. I think the details are very, very sparse, and I think it leaves way too much open to interpretation. I don't know that, okay, well, let's just get rid of the gate. Well, where was it located before? So how does that relate to the rest of the building? I don't know. I don't even know where the gate was. Um, so I don't know that that affects, um, you know, and, and I know Mark, I know Mark does a really good job on a lot of stuff, okay? But as a commissioner or whatever, we're supposed to know these things before we, before we start casting votes. There's not enough information here for me to be able to make a decision. If I can't make a decision educationally, then I got, then I have to vote against it. I would highly recommend you table it for two weeks, but, I mean, you may have enough to support it otherwise, but I would love to be able to vote for this project.
Right now, we have a motion on table in a second. Yes, Mr. Autry. Unless you're willing to withdraw that, that's what we're going to end up voting on, so, yeah.
Okay. I will say I-
Mr.-
My mic, so.
A motion to table has precedence over the main motion, so someone could move to table the motion that's on the floor.
Right.
Mr. Commissioner?
Let me say something, I'll come back to you, Mr. Brown. Just give me just a second. I want to say that I think, I agree with what Mr. Hoskins Hoffman are saying, is that while, in principle, we don't have an issue with ala- not allowing the two entries on the College Avenue, or I don't think we have an issue with the facade, it's just the entrance off the street and how it addresses the street, I think is the only issue we're talking about here, if I'm understanding that correctly. Uh, if- Yeah, please? Yes, it's, I, these, these two are, are related, you know? If, if, if we're going to say that we don't need entrances off these, these front two buildings, uh, in, in a, in a very straightforward sense, and you, you have an alternate proposal, uh, you know, that's what we're discussing, is that alternate proposal. We'd, we'd like to see changes to that.
I understand.
Mr. Brown, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I was just going to bring up a, a procedural, uh, issue. Uh, has the applicant said that they're willing to look at a two-week?
Well, we're not even-
Don't we have to get their approval?
No, we're looking to vote on, we're looking to vote on past these right now, so that's the motion on the floor. Mr. Chair? Mr. Altman? I'm going to move that we table- No, 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 we can't. We've already got a motion on the floor.
Hold it. A motion to table is always appropriate, it takes precedence over the main motion.
Oh, it does, okay, my bad. I apologize. It's okay. I'm going to move that we table the, uh, balance of the variances, variance two and variance three. Okay, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Hoffman. That would be for two weeks, to table for two weeks. And a second from Mr. Hoskins.
Yes, sir.
Mike is on this time.
Okay. Okay, that's all over, though. Mr. Garner?
Neville?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
Autry?
No.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Winland?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Eldon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That was fun. Thank you. Okay, next item. I'll get better. Conditional use permit sixteen dash five three eight eight. Conditional use for East, uh, Washington Avenue between Seventh and Eleventh Street. This is for a will, will have been subdivision submitted by Community by Design. Uh, Mr. Garner?
The applicant requested this item to be tabled indefinitely, and it is on the agenda, so I think we should open it up for public comment. I won't give a full staff report unless you have questions. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we need a staff report, because, at this point, but is there anyone here from the public that wants to comment on this item? Okay, seeing done. I'll bring him back to the commission for a motion. To table indefinitely.
I'd make one, but I can't.
Okay.
I'll move that we table, um, initially sixteen five three eight eight indefinitely.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion from Commissioner Selby, and a second from Commissioner Hoskins. Any more comment? Okay, Mr. Garner?
Neville?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Winland?
I'm on the board for Partners for Better Housing, and I'm going to abstain from voting on any items related to it.
Thank you.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Eldon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, last item on the agenda, rezoning sixteen dash five three eight five for south of Pumpkin Ridge Drive. This is for Falling Waters, submitted by Jorgensen Associates. Uh, let's see, Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this, uh, this project may be familiar to some of you. Uh, the project has had, has had some attempts to rezone. It's located, uh, south of Stonebridge Meadows Subdivision, and just south and east of the golf course there that you can see. Um, the project was originally in two thousand and five, part of a planned, residential planned zoning district known as Falling Waters. That was a, uh, two hundred and fifty-eight residential lots and, and over a hundred and thirty acres of property. It had a approximate density of about two units per acre over that site. This property was never developed, and, uh, the development rights did expire on that one. Um, the, uh, city staff, as you know, has been going through a process of eliminating these projects without zoning, or this land without zoning, and we, uh, we did, uh, bring this forward, I believe, and, uh, recommended, um, uh, you know, that could be incorrect. Is that true, Andrew? Did we bring this in forward originally, or was it the applicant that did?
We did.
That did? Okay. Well, the applicant, uh, we were recommending, uh, RA, Residential Agricultural. The applicant, uh, I don't think agreed with that, but, uh, what we did do was, uh, Planning Commission and City Council rezoned this, uh, to RA, Residential Agricultural. In two thousand and fifteen, just last year, the owner came back and said we'd like to zone for seventeen acres of this into RSF two, or two units per acre, approximately, uh, twice the density. Planning Commission denied that request at the time. Uh, the applicant did appeal to City Council, and City Council denied the request as well. Uh, tonight, the property owner is requesting to rezone thirty-five acres of the same property from RA to RSF two, and has provided a bill of assurance in order to limit the density to fifty-one single-family lots. The, uh, thirty-five acres in, uh, with RSF two would, uh, would give them, um, seventy lots or so. So they're actually reducing that by nineteen lots, what's possible, with the bill of assurance. Public comment has not been, uh, has not been received by staff, as far as we know. I've had a couple of questions, a few comments. As you can see, this property is, is really far on the outside edge of town. Primarily agricultural property all around it, some residential to the north. But, uh, this is rural, residential, and undeveloped property all the way around. Uh, the city plan twenty, uh, twenty thirty calls this rural residential property, and the goals of those are, uh, that, that we really do encourage conservation, very limited development out here. Um, preservation of woodlands, grasslands. You can see, this is an entirely wooded and very steeply sloped site. And we feel that it's, uh, appropriate to have the RA designation on this site. It does allow some development, but, uh, it very well meets the Future Land Use Plan. The, uh, RSF two designation, even with the bill of assurance, we feel is, uh, is in opposition to that goal. Uh, this was a, a property that had formerly been in a, in a little bit highly, uh, well, a residential future land use designation. In two thousand and eleven, just a few years ago, we decided that that needed to be reduced, that it was not appropriate to put that much density out here. And, uh, that is in part informing our, our recommendation tonight. As far as compatibility, uh, in the area, we feel that, uh, that density is not necessarily compatible. This is, uh, not the development pattern that's typical out there on the edge, as you can see. And we've got large amounts of open pasture, uh, that hillside there, all the way around is treed. Uh, and feel that the, uh, the RSF two, uh, would not meet that, uh, meet that goal. We don't feel that this, uh, is either, you know, necessary or justified, as well, the property does allow two-acre residential lots. Those are beneficial in a lot of ways in, in areas like this. It does provide development rights, as I noted. Uh, and it would be more compatible with adjacent properties than, than approximately seventeen thousand or eighteen thousand square foot lots out here. Some of these are many, many acres, and, um, very few are as, as small as being proposed. So, for those reasons, um, we would recommend denial of this, uh, of this zoning request. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Thompson. This applicant here this evening? If you would come forward and state your name for the record, and add any more comments you would like?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Williams, my name is Robert Rhodes. I'm with the law firm of Hall Estle, and I represent the owners, the Buffington, um, Development Company, and they are here represented by two of their partners, Clay Carlton, wave, Mr. Carlton, and Mike Lambreth. And, um, I did not represent them at the Planning Commission, um, when they were here last year, but I did represent them when they were before the City Council. And so, I also, uh, just sort of, uh, in order for more transparency, I believe I was on the City Council with, um, your chairman when we approved this, uh, I think in three readings on one night unanimously, is what I believe the record will show, uh, as a, as a PZD. And, so, you know, if you kind of put yourself, you know, back in that, in that, um, situation, or that, uh, that era nineteen, or was it two thousand and five? Um, uh, the, the owners have owned this property since that time, or actually before that time, and they've been paying on their note that entire time. They also have been, um, uh, participated in the, I think to the tune of about a million dollars in putting the water in the sewer underneath, uh, the river, which was a very expensive project, and, and, and they contributed to that. Um, the reason they didn't develop it, I think you, you all know, is that, you know, the economy turned south, and they couldn't. But they maintained, um, their ownership of the property, and they continued paying, and now they're coming forward for the second time, uh, with a little bit different, a little bit different take on what they did the first time. It's, it's thirty-five acres, not seventeen acres, and, um, what, what, uh, good many of the neighbors, um, spoke out against when we were here last year, when we were here, when we were before the City Council and before this body, was in regard to the traffic, which, you know, my understanding from, um, seeing numerous memos from your city attorney, traffic is one of the things that is, is, should be considered, uh, when you're thinking about doing a rezoning. And the traffic issue seemed to stem from the fact that, at that time, the plan was to go out the east end of the, uh, where it's stubbed out on Pumpkin, whatever it's called, Pumpkin Road. Um, and there was a lot of question, a lot of desire, and matter of fact, I think one of the council members actually said, gosh, I could support this if you would go out the, the other way and go, um, do all your construction traffic through Dead Horse Mountain Road. Well, at that particular time, they were only developing and asking to, to rezone the seventeen acres that, that was closest to, to, um, Pumpkin Road. Now, they've, they've expanded it, like I said before, and they can do that, um, that construction access to the, and they actually, um, I'll go a step further, um, they are willing to change their bill of assurance to not only, um, what is currently on there, which is, um, a limitation to fifty-one lots or one point four per acre, they'll also add that all of the construction traffic will be, um, through Dead Horse Mountain. Okay? Um, a couple other comments. In looking at the staff report, um, there's just a, on, on page, uh, two, I'm sorry. This is in regard to, um, they're talking about, uh, the RSF four Stonebridge Meadow is, is, um, four hundred feet away from this development, but, uh, in actuality, it's adjacent to the development. And I guess that's important. I mean, I'm not trying to nitpick the staff's report, except I think it's kind of important, because if you look, there is a lot of RSF four. Yeah, it's a golf course, and that, that's a, a big part of the green space. Well, the golf course is going to stay the golf course, but most people that develop a golf course, it's envisioned that it's going to be developed around the course by people that want to live there. And it is, uh, RSF four in a number of places. I'd also say that in late August of this last year, uh, the plaza, um, was approved, and it, uh, was twelve acres, four point seven an acre. And it's further east, and the reason I mention the fact that it's further east is because I think there's probably going to be perhaps some concern about, um, you know, this is sprawl. Well, it's not really, it's really infill, because there's these other subdivisions that have already been approved, and I think you can consider this, um, infill around a golf course. Also, I'd bring your attention to the fact, in, in January of two thousand and sixteen, this year, the Villas at the Stone Bridge, uh, was approved, and, uh, that was an RSF four, uh, with a bill of assurance at two point five acres. And so, I say all that to tell you that I think it is, um, I think it's within your authority, and I think it, it, it's in your discretion to, you know, to give this an approval and a thumbs up and pass it on to the City Council, um, for the reasons that I've mentioned. And with that, um, the, I, I certainly will stand by for any questions that you may have, and, um, one or both of the owners can also, um, jump up here and help me as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for a second? Please step forward. State your name for the record, if you would, please.
My name is Wanda Altman. I live at twenty fifty-nine South Cherry Hills Drive. I'm concerned about the environmental impact of this rezoning on this pristine mountainside, on the periphery of Fayetteville. And it is on the periphery. I cannot, I'm sorry, I cannot in any way see this as infilling. I mean, you look at what surrounds the property, there is another undeveloped mountain, there's pastures with cows, there's sparsely populated farmland. So, it's not infilling by any understanding that I have of the term. It is continuing to develop on the periphery, which flies in the face, very much so, of the city plan twenty thirty, and I believe that's why that it was, uh, turned down by both of the, the governing bodies last time. This is slightly different, it's been tweaked a little, but it's basically the same. It would be a reversal of city policy, I believe, uh, as far as plan twenty thirty to rezone this. And in the matter of compatibility, it simply is not compatible with what's around it. It's currently, the current zoning is compatible with the pastures and the mountainside, and, and, um, but to rezone it would not be compatible. I know that the city plan twenty thirty is just a guideline, I've been told that, but I think it's more important than that. I think that since it was unanimously adopted just five years ago by the City Council, it's really a shared vision, a shared plan of all of us, of what we would like the city of Fayetteville to be. And the best way to ruin a city is one decision at a time. Because then really, as we just heard about some other developments, that development can then be used to justify another development, and that one for another one, and where does that end? I mean, I, I don't see an end to that. Um, so, this is not just another piece of property. It is a part of what makes Fayetteville a beautifully unique place to live, and why many of us have chosen to live here in Fayetteville, and specifically out in, uh, Stonebridge Meadows, and out in that area and along the periphery. We can always turn a pristine mountainside into another housing development, but we can't turn a housing development into a pr- a pristine mountainside. Some decisions are irreversible, uh, and it sets a very dangerous precedent, as I've said. It's not just the existing communities there that are being placed at risk, and I believe that they are being placed at risk with flooding issues and, and with the traffic, and I'll, uh, speak to that in just a second. But I think it's our whole vision of, uh, Fayetteville and the future of Fayetteville that's being placed at risk here. Um, and as to, yes, last time, I think a year ago, maybe less than a year ago, when this proposal was, rezoning proposal was made, uh, it was a huge issue for, um, that neighborhood as far as the construction vehicles and all of the traffic being funneled down Cherry Hills Drive. Um, but I know- But I know I have here a cover letter from, I guess, Mr. Rhodes or Mr. Jorgensen, that says it's the plan to take all construction traffic off of Dead Horse Mountain, but that's not included in the current bill of assurance, and I believe the bill of assurance is what is legally binding. A cover letter, maybe you can help me out here, someone, but I don't think a cover letter is legally binding. So, if this were to be rezoned, I mean, do we have any assurance at all at this point that once it's done and construction starts that we aren't going to have all this heavy earth-moving equipment and bulldozers and, and dump trucks flying up and down Cherry Hills Drive? The way it's currently written, I don't think we have that assurance, because it's not part of the legally binding bill of assurance. So, you know, plans change. Plans change, so that may be the plan, but later on, there may be a different plan, it may not be economically feasible, I don't know. But I just think this is a dangerous precedent. This is so in line with twenty thirty to keep this at its current zoning, and I would urge you to do that and say no to this rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Altman? If you would say.
My name is Jay Ray. I live at twenty fifty, South Cherry Hills Drive, and I just want to talk about the flooding. This mountainside, that water comes off this mountain in the wintertime, I mean, it just rolls over the golf course. Now, we've had six floods since two thousand and five. The brand-new bridge at, at Dead Horse Mountain, brand-new, went over this year. Also, the bridge on Black Oak, which is the backside coming off Armstrong, it also flooded and was closed down. One road open, Roberts Road, there's no improvement's been made, and it has five-foot docks on the side, there's no shoulder. The water's going to just run this place, I'm telling you. I mean, I play golf up there a lot, and when it rains, those streams are running down, and luckily, the golf course catches most of it right now, but can you imagine all the asphalt roads and the housing, how fast that water's going to run? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gregory Carter, and I also live in Stonebridge Meadows. And the concern that I have is, I echo their concerns, and another concern that I have is our traffic has gotten better coming out of there, they've put a stop signal in. I'm just worried about, it, 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 it's, if you have to get out of there at eight o'clock, I try, luckily, I'm retired, I can plan everything after, after nine o'clock, but if you have to get out of there at eight o'clock, it's a nightmare having this much more traffic coming in. The, even if they go the dead horse, they're going to go to that stoplight, and if they, I, 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 I am very happy that they've decided to, to the dead horse. Before, I was really against this because it would have put such an influx of traffic to our community, and the construction traffic would have just devastated us. But I still, I still feel for the flooding issue, the traffic issue in the city plan, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Larry Altman from twenty fifty-nine South Cherry Hills Drive. I, I feel like we're really beating a dead horse mountain here. We stood up and argued all of these issues time and time again when the developers appealed to the city council after this body's decision that it did not fit in with the current twenty thirty plan. All of the issues that we've talked about before, that we brought up before, are still there. This proposal is really not that much different than what the developers were proposing before, except this time they're wanting to develop, to develop thirty-five acres rather than seventeen acres. And the bill of assurance, you know, really all it states is that we are only going to, we are only going to build fifty lots or fifty houses on this particular plot of ground. But as I argued to the city council before, not quite a year ago, it seems to me that this is just a way of slow-rolling the city council, and that their intention is to continue to develop this property until all of the land is developed, if they do get the rezoning. Yes, they are saying in this bill of assurance that we'll only build fifty houses on the thirty-five acres, but what's to say that they wouldn't come back after this has been built, you know, and ask for rezoning of the, the rest of the property that they own out there? Again, as my wife stated, this is a pristine piece of property on a mountainside on the edge of Fayetteville, and if you look up their city plan twenty thirty, goal number two is we will discourage suburban sprawl. And as I argued to the city council previously, this is really suburban sprawl at its finest. And for those reasons and lots of others, I really encourage you to stick with your previous decision to disapprove this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altman. Anyone else in the public want to comment? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission. Mr. Williams, will you comment on the bill of assurance, since that was one of the questions? I guess there was a comment about, Mr. Rhodes brought up the point of they would add redirecting the traffic, but obviously, if it's not in our current bill of assurance, we can't hold them to that.
As I say, I think you are correct. Until it's actually in the signed bill of assurance, you can't rely upon it. Letters and stuff like that don't make any difference, so that the applicant would actually have to submit an amended bill of assurance that would include where the construction traffic is going to be limited to, and until that happens, that's not something we can rely upon. The other thing I should mention, though, that I don't think, I've not been able to find any mention of drainage as an issue in zoning. They mentioned traffic, which is certainly, the courts have talked about that, and there's many other things, compatibility, stuff like that, but drainage is something really that's handled during development itself. Obviously, an owner of a property is not required to cure somebody else's drainage problem. We try to ensure through our regulations that drainage is not worsened, but we cannot require a landowner to fix a problem that really is not their problem, it's a problem of how the land is lying and, and what happens when you have a big storm. So, even though I know that drainage is a big issue here for this neighborhood, it's really not an issue for you all in deciding a rezoning request.
Good, thank you. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Altman? Wow. You know, we often have people come and, and speak about, you know, why they disapprove of this or that development, you know, in their backyard. I get those, I get those phone calls a lot. I don't think I, and every time I get that phone call from somebody, I say, "I, I understand your concerns, and please try to frame your comments in, in terms of the, of city plan twenty thirty." And in the, in the short amount of time that I've been on this, this commission, I don't think I've ever heard someone frame, if someone do that more effectively than Ms. Altman just did. I don't, I mean, I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to try to add on to her comments. I'm afraid I won't do as good of a job as you just did, but, but let me, let me speak to a couple of things. I, I, we, we are discouraging suburban sprawl, and, and I, and I think that a lot of people have a tendency to see that as, as purely pro-urbanism, you know? And that's, that's kind of the, the sexy development part of this that we tend to talk about here. We tend to talk about, you know, traditional town form and, and great streets and how this building, you know, deals with pedestrian scale and, and whatnot, but, but really, discouraging suburban sprawl is every bit as much about being pro-country as it is pro-urban. And so, I, I really appreciated the, the comments of, of the few people that, that spoke that discussed the, the unique identity, the, the kind of rural culture that exists actually very close to downtown Fayetteville. I mean, this is, it's, it's, it's kind of astounding how easy it is for, you know, those of us that live downtown to, to be in just absolutely gorgeous surroundings in, in minutes. And I'm, I'm someone that, I went to high school briefly in, in Houston, I, I very much understand what the other side of that coin looks like. I'm very thankful that, that we have all of these goals, and I, I'm not going to be voting in support of this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altman.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Quinlan?
I'd like to comment on the existing zoning code, specifically that the agricultural district is designed to prevent wasteful scattering, and this is from, from the intent of the code, wasteful scattering of development in rural areas and obtain an economy of public funds and the providing of public improvements and services. And I think this is one of those perfect projects that's counter to both of those goals in existing zoning, and so I think is inappropriate for rezoning. I think it both is suburban sprawl against our twenty thirty plan, and is certainly not in keeping with our protection of rural areas. I think I also agree with the staff report, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness on that, that the publicly maintained sewer, water, and roads that are going to be added to this project and then added to city responsibility are going to represent an incredible cost to the rest of Fayetteville to maintain, you know, the scattered services for these fifty houses, and I think the incredible cost of that to the rest of the city is not justified, so I will also not be in support of this rezoning.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? Mr. Oskins?
Well, I can see I'm going to be on the other side of this fight. First question for staff, is this property in HHOD?
Yes.
This? Okay. Um, while I'm all about the city twenty thirty plan, I'll make the same comment now as I made earlier tonight. One size fits all doesn't work. There's different parts of town that, that can handle something besides urban forum. We also need to remember, this property is zoned RA, residential agriculture. Now, I don't know who's going to raise cows up there on that hill, but it's within their right to do just that. Of course, they don't need so many trees if they're raising cows up there. There's been a lot of money spent on this property, and we chose as a city to put that border where we put it, okay? The, the suburban sprawl thing, that ship has sailed, it's already there. This is a golf course. One of the things around a golf course is high density. That's, that's one of the attractions to a golf course. Everybody wants to live on a golf course, put as many houses on it as possible. The, it makes sense to have density out there, and plus, you know, the reason we have sprawl is because everybody's to get in their car and drive a long distance to get services, be it gas, food, whatever. And, well, we've got Fifteenth Street out there, and we keep saying, "Boy, we'd really like to have some commercial out there, we'd like to have some infill out there," and I think something, I think Come and Go was going to go out there and, I don't even know where that project is now, but, but the one thing that commercial has to have to come there is rooftops. That's one of the things that's required, or commercial's not coming. If commercial doesn't come, you have sprawl. And so, it makes sense to me, in fact, it makes sense to me to develop this property at a higher density than RSF two. I'm surprised that that's all they're asking for. You know, not so long ago, we approved a PZD on this project. We had the city, I guess we had city plan twenty twenty-five then, but the goals weren't that much different at that time. This isn't a city limits, it's not farmland up on this hill, it makes sense to develop it, but they've invested a ton of money. You know, we can't put every house in Fayetteville on flat land. We have hills in this town, and, and sometimes we're going to have to put houses on hills. You know, these folks have as much right to develop their property as the people down the flat down below develop their property. You know, the, I think before, one of the issues was the connection as far as the construction traffic off of Dead Horse Mountain Road. Well, they obviously cured that. And if this zoning was approved, I'm, I'm sure, you know, even I would want some kind of a, some kind of a, being rest assured that, that construction would come, would come off Dead Horse Mountain Road. That seemed to be one of the biggest issues before. Eventually, and correct me if I'm wrong, but eventually, this neighborhood will be tied through all the way from, what is it, Pumpkin Bridge to Dead Horse Mountain Road. Will it eventually be tied together?
Except to wait and see what, what development happens. There is a plain collector's street traversing out to, to the east of the site.
Okay. So, so if those are connected together, basically what that does is that gives the neighborhood that exists there another way out. So, you would think that it might actually help traffic conditions a little bit. Anyway, I have no problem with, with the RSF two zoning with or without the limitation of the bill of assurance. I think it's appropriate. Again, you can't build every house in the flat, and like I said, the, the houses have already started out there, it's on a golf course, the density makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oskins. Mr. Brown?
We need to support the twenty thirty plan. There is a logic to what the twenty thirty plan says about this property. It's on the edge of town, on the transect, you have lower density leading into higher The plan also uses the rural residential area as a means to encourage the conservation and preservation of sensitive, important environmental features. And we have one there. This, this property would be on the side of Dead Horse Mountain. We have designated an overlay hillside, hilltop overlay district to also protect it. It does permit large lot residential development, but as you get to the higher densities, because of the severe slopes and the hydrologic soil characteristics, as soon as you remove those trees, you're going to increase the erosion potential. And we're using the, we're not, we're not trying to fix a problem, the master plan is trying to avoid a problem. And it has designated, it does recognize the, the, the characteristics of this land and that, that it needs to stay a lower-density residential, large lot, to reduce the, to preserve the forested hillside and to reduce the amount of runoff that could be generated by increasing the densities. So, I feel that things haven't changed that much since, that's been my major concern when we first looked at it, and it still remains that with looking at adding fifty-one houses on the side of that, that hillside. So, I, I would, I don't think I'll be able to support this rezoning.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. Mr. Oskins?
When the HHOD came around, I was very involved in that at the time, and while I didn't see the, the absolute final draft of it or what have you, the intent of the HHOD was to do exactly what, what Commissioner Brown just said, and that was to, to promote responsible development on hillsides, so that you didn't have the runoff problems, that you didn't have the erosion problems or what have you. There's, that's a whole nother set of regulations that, outside of the, of the zoning of this property, that they're going to have to contend with. So, I don't personally see that as a very valid argument. Again, you know, I don't think the intent of the HHOD was to prevent people from building on hillsides. At least, that's what I was told when I was going through, so I hope that's still the case. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Ms. Brown?
Yeah. The hillside ordinance, I'm using it in my comments as a indication of the valuable nature of that environmental resource, Dead Horse Mountain, and that forested hillside. I, I, that's the context that I use, that I referred to it. I realize that that is there to control development in that area, and if that's the- there to control development in that area. And if that's the direction of the council, the commission that we would, you know, approve the rezoning, I would, I would sleep a little bit better, knowing that we do have that hillside, you know, requirement and hilltop ordinance to help guide the eventual development. But again, I was not using it as, that comment was more recognizing the importance of that, that mountaintop and mountainside environmental plan. That's how it realizes that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you mind asking a question? Mr. Autry.
So, Mr. Garner, there was discussion of that briefly, of that Collector Street that runs over to Hunt Lane. Would this, I know we're talking about a rezoning here and not development, but potentially, would that Collector Street be part of this development? I, I know we're conjecturing here, I know, but...
Hey, look, it does go across a part of the, a part of the property. So, we would just have to evaluate that when the development comes through. But there's definitely a, a chance that that would come through and potentially stub out to the east to allow that future connection over to Hunt.
It's just a possibility, right? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Autry.
The only difference, and I opposed this the first time, and the major difference is we've doubled the amount of acreage and more than doubled the 50 potential homes here, that issue. And I know we cannot consider drainage. It's not their problem to fix. But you can't ignore it either, because it's going to be there. I've been on that course before, too, and sometimes you can't even walk across it. If you're kind of scudding back the hillside a little bit for the development, it will be that much more drainage, erosion potential. And when you're adding twice the number of homes to the potential plan, I can't really support it again this time around. And it's possibly not the place for our infill item here on our 2030 plan. So, I will continue my denial of this request.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Commissioners, any more thoughts? Motions? Mr. Chair. Mr. Hoffman.
May we deny RZN 16-5385?
Okay. Okay. I have a motion from Mr. Hoffman and a second from Ms. Quinlan. Right. Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Isn't this forwarding with the recommendation, recommendation of denial?
You are correct. Thank you for saying that. Oh, is it not?
Actually, it's not. It's, they can appeal if it's denied, or you can forward the recommendation.
Denial. Thank you.
Scratch that last question, Mr. Chair.
Sorry. I'm easily confused this evening, so that works good. Okay. With no more discussion, Mr. Garner, we call roll.
Nellin?
No.
Selby?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Oskins?
There's a motion to deny, correct?
Correct. Quinlan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Eldon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. That is all of our agenda this evening. I did have one question for the commissioners real quick while we're here. So, on the Active Transportation Committee, there has to be a planning commissioner sit on that. I have been sitting on it, but I was wondering if somebody else would want to sit on that. What could you explain? It's the old sidewalk and trails committee, but it's now, it's called Active Transportation Committee.
How often do they meet?
Um, quarterly, roughly. We have, we have...
Everybody on the screen.
Wow.
Uh, I think it's good that somebody from Planning Commission represent that because they do, uh, it's good for when you're up here and you kind of see what the big plan is. It helps. So, I'll just have Matt inhale it. All right, who, who wants a shot at it? You could take, I guess we could do, we could take turns soon, or you can just go. But I'll have Matt throw you all on the email list. I'll say... All right, we'll figure it out. We don't have to figure it out this second, but we'll figure it out. So, I'm glad everybody's interested. So, that's...
I have a couple of more, a couple of announcements.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. The city is undertaking a master transportation plan. It'll be over the next two years. The Planning Commission will be involved in that as well. And our first step in that would be a work session following our next agenda session. So, please attend the next Planning Commission agenda session. And we'll just have a working session with some of the staff, project management, to kind of, you know, inserting ourselves into that process. And we also have a subdivision committee this Thursday, team number three, Hoffman, Selby, and Quinlan are on, at nine o'clock.
Good. Thank you. Word, John.